I'd like to call the August 2nd, 2023 Yumitila County Board of Commissioners Meeting to order and have a Pledge of Allegiance.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as a world.
Welcome, everyone. It's always great to see a full house. Would like to remind everyone that this is a public meeting. It is being recorded, and then there are also people attending virtually. And what we're going to do, as in all meetings, we will open up the meeting for public comment as soon as we get done with the minutes in the agenda. And we ask that when you approach the podium, that you give us your full name and address. And what we invite you to do is public comment on anything that is not on the agenda today. During the agenda, we'll give you an opportunity to speak on those items. We do ask, and I will keep time because we have a huge agenda today. I am going to ask that public comment be held to three minutes. So with that said, Commissioners, any awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
Yes, I have one. And Joe Fiamora is here today, and this is from his department. And it's a coin recipient, Vicky Coria. I would like to recognize Vicky for her excellent work in the Environmental Health Program. Vicky has been an important figure in the department, and she has made noticeable contributions for the EH program that deserves recognition. When Vicky first joined our team, it was during COVID. Vicky was first tasked with contact tracing while trying to juggle other training for the food, pool, and lodging program. While most time was spent with contract tracing, contact tracing, she was doing her best to complete inspections. Vicky did an amazing job with her time management and responsibilities. Her work did not go unnoticed. One of Vicky's accomplishments met the EH program goals, and that was passing the MEEHA exam. This is a difficult test that all trainees must pass in their second year. This test covers many different subjects like soil, drinking water, food, and air. I am proud of Vicky for accomplishing such a feat to become a fully registered sanitarian. Additionally, Vicky has been a great help with conducting well water surveys. There are multiple steps involved that include collecting a water sample, filling out OHA's voucher questionnaire, and conducting a well survey. Her participation in this program has been beneficial. Lastly, Vicky has been a great help with food plan reviews. Food plan reviews are time-consuming and necessary to complete. This involves reviewing the menu, equipment, floor plan, and overall operation of the facility. This can be complicated depending on how food is prepped, assembled, cooked, and served. This responsibility requires an in-depth knowledge of the food code. Because of the outstanding dedication and hard work, I would like to recognize Vicky for this award. I want to congratulate Vicky for passing the exam and obtaining her license and to keep up the great work. Byron Morris. So congratulations to Vicky. And those of you that don't know, we have a coin program. John, you want to just explain a little bit?
So the challenge coin came from World War I. When members of the military would, if you would say I belong to a certain unit, you would prove it by the challenge. You would show them your coin, your unit coin. It also kind of morphed into cohesive unit cohesiveness, and it was really good to exchange coins with other people and everything else. And we had that at the sheriff's office, and I was there, and I wanted to bring something similar to that to the rest of the county, and that's where I came from, so.
So congratulations to Vicky.
She not?
This is not her.
Okay. Yes, please pass that on from all the Commissioners. Commissioner Schaefer, anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I do have. I would like to read this from Director Walter. Congratulations to Megan Dogchesky, our County Planning Division Manager, for recently becoming a Certified Flood Plane Manager, a CFM for the county. The process to become a CFM involves a rigorous, week-long training and a comprehensive exam. Megan did this during a very busy time for the planning office, and we appreciate that she will bring another important skill to our team. Megan, please come up and give this card from your department and a coin. I'm going to give this to you if you promise to sit in on the MPO meeting so I don't have to. Okay. Congratulations, Megan. And Bob, thank you for really pointing that out. And congratulations on the new title.
Thank you.
I'm not going to tell you the second.
It's just our risk.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of meeting. Do we have any minutes? Nope. Okay. Any additions to the agenda? All right. At this time, we'll have public input. Again, please, if you're going to approach the podium, give us your full name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. So there we go. Thank you, Ann.
My name's Ann Jolly. I live at 225 Maple Avenue in Mountain Free Water. This week, our community has lost a great advocate for the preservation of proper land use in the passing of Brunella Thompson. Her passion was shown when she spoke to you just a few weeks ago. As a member of Blue Mountain Alliance, since the inception in 2008, that's 15 years, she will be greatly missed. Excuse me. In her memory, I ask, I guess I have to get a little water. Is that okay? Here. Sorry, my throat just closed up.
Where were you? As a member of Blue Mountain, okay. As a member of Blue Mountain Alliance, for 15 years, she will be greatly missed. In her memory, I ask the county commissioners to move forward to the Oregon Supreme Court on this Nolan Hills project. Thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you very much. Other, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Sunny Danforth, 225 Maple Avenue, Mountain Free Water, Ann's daughter. I am going to speak as well on to the Nolan Hills and ask you to take this to the Supreme Court. You know, this is a legislative issue, not a legislative, I'm sorry, this is an ordinance issue. No matter what the ordinance is, it's not about the project. It is about upholding the ordinances that our county has passed. It could be any county. But that our county has passed, that a state agency has deemed not important to follow, therefore, it's your job to defend the ordinances of the county. You've been hired, yes, by vote, by election, to represent the county and look after many aspects, and one of the aspects is our land use. So I'm asking you to take this to the Supreme Court, fighting for our ordinances and upholding them. If by chance, you take this to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court were to say, "Well, we're just going to let EFSEC overrule that," you've lost nothing. Because if you do not go to the Supreme Court, that will be the precedent that is set. But also, if the Supreme Court were to, let's say the county lost that, it would destroy land use in Oregon as we know it. Because that is overstepping what the ordinances that a county has done. So I believe the Supreme Court will uphold the rights of the county to have ordinances that a state agency, an unelected bureaucratic body, does not have the right to overstep. The heavy lifting has been done by the citizens of Yumitila County in getting this particular ordinance passed, and ask that you can fight for this, defend Yumitila County's ordinance, and take it to the Supreme Court. Also, Blue Mountain Alliance will be, if it goes to the Supreme Court, we would like to come on as a friend of the court. We're prepared, private citizens, to financially take care of that, and that's a huge commitment. But the commitment is, the hard work has been done, the heavy lifting on this has been done. This is the final step, like the final straw. Is it going to stand, or does a state agency just get to come in to Yumitila County and run amok over us? It will not just affect Yumitila County in the future, it will affect all the counties in the state. This is a statewide issue, that Yumitila County, you're the spearhead of what is it going to be in the state for any state agency to follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make comments? Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on with the agenda then. And at this time, I'd like to ask the Charter Review Committee to come forward.
My name is Don Miller, Milton Free Water, 53307 West Bollou. This is our time finally to give you a report on what the Yumitila County Charter Group is recommending for you to consider. As opposed to previous times, we did not take 16 or 18 months. We managed to do this within six, which we're very happy about. I would ask that the committee members who were present today introduce themselves also.
I, go ahead.
Klaus Helena from Weston.
Mark Kamalski, Hermiston.
Tom Smooth, Armistead.
Bob Barton, Hermiston.
These and other individuals were instrumental in coming to the conclusions that we have provided for you. And this time, it is quick, it is easy. Although we've spent that six months having some very detailed discussions about a multitude of possible considerations for changes to the charter. Our final results came down to just the two items which you have in front of you. Number one, which addresses the sheriff's age requirement, and we are, for your consideration, recommending that any candidate for office of sheriff shall present to the county elections officer a written certification from the Oregon Board of Public Safety Standards and Training, showing that the candidate meets the qualifications of a citizen of the United States and is at least 25 years old. That change really is moving it from 21 years of age to 25 years of age. Secondly, also dealing with the sheriff's office, and these are based upon some recommendations that were provided during discussions with Sheriff Terry Rowan, is a residency requirement consideration. And that currently is not in the charter, but we have asked that a person be a resident of Yumitila County in order to hold the position of county sheriff.
I can't believe that wasn't already in yet. Kind of a no-brainer.
Well, we kind of came to that conclusion, too. It was like, wow. And so there was not a very long discussion about that once that particular item was brought up, and there was discussion about, if I were in another county, could I apply and run for the position? The answer is certainly. But if elected, if elected, you must then have residency to serve as the sheriff. Any comments from any of the members in addition? I certainly want to thank the members of the committee for what they have done, a lot of hard work, and a very dependable group. And I want to thank Commissioners for allowing us the opportunity to go through that, and especially, we have a county council who is instrumental in us being successful. Thank you very much, Don.
Before, I'm going to jump ahead of you guys this time because I imagine that. I want to thank you guys, all of you. I think the Charter Review, everybody's heard me say it like a thousand times, I think it's the most critical nature, most critical aspect of making Yumitila County work. Yumitila County was one of the early counties that established a charter, and I think it's been an example for the rest of the state as other counties came on, actually in the same year, but others have been. I think that taking the Charter Review and the every four-year review series is incumbent on all of our, as Commissioners, to make sure that we do that, whether there's a long, long laundry list of items to be addressed, or if it's a short list, or if it's just contemplating and then nothing coming from that. But I can't thank the Charter Review Committee enough. And while you guys make your comments, I'm going to go ahead and give each of the members that are here today, and those that I run into in the future, one of our county coins, and say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks.
Thanks, Don, very much.
Yeah.
You. This way.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
I guess the only thing I want to say is that I didn't realize how important the charter was until I ran for office. And people really do know, you know, what's in our county charter. And so I appreciate all your time and effort to, I'm sure you had plenty of discussions on all sorts of items, which I would love to hear what was actually discussed, but we don't have time for that. But I appreciate all of your time, and I know each one of you are very, very busy. So thank you for volunteering to do that.
I too want to echo my colleagues in thanking you for your time and your service. It's not an easy task, we recognize that. Obviously, I mean, I don't know how many review committees missed that piece about the sheriff residency requirement, so good catch you ever caught that. So, but seriously, thank you for everything you guys did, and I really appreciate that and the work you put into it.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you again. And in closing, you know, these two recommendations, we would ask the Commissioners to move forward with those as possible changes approved by the county.
I'm going to read the next step in this. The next step is the board will, after we receive this, the board will have 60 days to consider the recommendations and may place all or part of, or none of, the committee's recommendations on the ballot. To me, none's never been an option, but I would ask the Commissioners to go ahead, and while the review's here, is I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we, well, we did accept the report, and I would move that we move them both forward, both, yeah, both recommendations to move forward on the ballot.
Second.
All those, and there's been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very heavy of the Senate, aye. Thank you guys very much on all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Kaylee Davis with an update from KUWS. For those that are in the crowd and going to watch the presentation, each of the Commissioners received a copy of the presentation. So if you see us looking down, following along, it's because we already have a copy up here to pay attention to.
Do you want the video first or the PowerPoint?
The video first, yeah. So first of all, just really appreciate the opportunity to be here today and present.
Name and.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Kaylee Davis.
I like doing that because every time I testify, I have to.
Yes. Kaylee Davis, I'm with Amazon Web Services, and I lead External Affairs for the region. I just wanted to say thank you, and I have to say, this is probably my favorite way to kick off a meeting, with awards and recognition, so just wanted to say congratulations to Megan again. Had a chance to work with her, and she is phenomenal. And so congratulations to both of those award winners today. I wanted to come today and just share a little bit about two projects that we recently completed. The first one is a docu-series that we just kicked off May 31st, and so the goal of this project was really to highlight our collaboration with small businesses and education across eastern Oregon. I'm from this area. I grew up in Athena, Oregon, and live in Echo now. I didn't give my address, 150 Dupont Street. But it's really important to us to be able to highlight some of those collaborative partnerships here in the area. And so the one that I wanted to show today is about our collaboration with Blue Mountain Community College back in 2011, when we first started building in the area. Really wanted to make sure that there was an opportunity for local eastern Oregon residents to have opportunities to get training in order to work at the data centers in the area. And so this video is just a short video that highlights that partnership, so I'll go ahead and kick that off, and then I'll share some other updates as well.
Thanks, Riley.
And if you've had a chance to meet Pete, he is just as incredible in person as he is in that video, and can't tell you how much we appreciate that partnership with him and Blue Mountain Community College. My background before this role was leading workforce development for the Port of Mauro, and so there's just really nothing better than connecting people in the community with jobs that are good fit for them and that they're excited about, and so that's a big piece of this. Before I get into the last report, I just wanted to share a couple of quick highlights. We, last year, kicked off the ChangeX Community Fund here in Yumitila County, and so just kicked that off again for 2023, so there's $300,000. It's, again, a fund that's open to individuals or community organizations, from grants to 500 up to $10,000. And so if you know of anybody that's doing great work in the community, or anybody here knows any organizations that can use some extra funds, that's open through September 1st, and we try to make it about as easy as possible for that grant application process. And if you're awarded, you get 70% of the funds that you were awarded upfront so that you can immediately get to work. From that grant last year, everything from a mobile thrift shop here, I know the city of Pendleton had an app that just helped new people coming into the community discover all the great things that Pendleton has to offer. Hermiston Downtown Association got a grant, so really trying to make sure all the good work that's taking place across the county has funds to continue and grow what they're doing. We also are really excited to partner with Yumitila County. On a press release coming out here shortly, really wanted to say congratulations again on the OCP grant, to the Commissioners, to Bob, to Megan, to everybody who's working on that. Just very excited to be able to help support that project, not just with the grant application process and some mashing funds, but also as you continue that work. I know that's been a huge lift for everybody, and so just really appreciate that partnership. And then we also have our, we also have our. And then we also have our, we also have our ambassadors in the area. Hopefully you've seen them at Umatilla County Fair, at school organizations, but those are great opportunities for our ambassadors to get involved and volunteer. So if you know of any organizations that need volunteers, we also are happy to help share that information with AWS employees who could come in and help support those activities. Am I at time? Okay, so I'll be really quick on this last one. This is a report that was just completed. You do have a copy of it in front of you, as well as a fiscal impact report and community engagement report as well. This was something that was done actually six months ago. It's pretty incredible that it's been that long, but back in December. So we really wanted to, we really wanted to come and take some time to really figure out, okay, these data centers that have come into the region, what's the good, the bad, how can we do a better job? And so this report is really focused on some of those conversations and outcomes from back in December, but I'm going to take a quick step back and just talk a little bit about the cloud and cloud computing, because sometimes people have questions about that, and I don't want to skip over that. So the cloud, of course, is any information that's stored online, if you're on your phone and you're pulling up the weather, or Netflix, or any of that information all has to be stored somewhere. And then cloud computing is actually something that we started as a separate business. Most people are familiar with Amazon and starting off selling books and different merchandise, and so storing all of that information, we got really efficient at that. And so cloud computing was an opportunity to offer storage space to individuals, to governments, to businesses, and so it really was tailor-made for them, so if they just need a small amount of storage space and can grow as that organization grows. But it also is an opportunity to do it in a more cost-effective way, so they don't have to purchase all of that equipment.
Can we show the slide that shows the economic impact?
Yeah, that's, thank you.
Yes.
And you're not being rushed, three minutes is for the public comment.
Oh, okay.
You're on the, you're on the agenda for a presentation.
Okay, okay, perfect. So, so from that business model, there was an opportunity to grow, and Eastern Oregon was a fantastic place to grow. We're actually the second-largest cloud region in the US after Virginia, and that's something we're really proud of, and being able to offer a lot of great job opportunities here locally. So this is, I think, what you were looking for. So back in 2011 is when we announced this region, so since that time, over 15.6 billion in capital investment's been made here.
15.6?
Yeah, 15.6 billion in capital investment has been made here. This is as of 2021, over 4,700 jobs have been created or retained here in Eastern Oregon.
That's not just Umatilla County, right?
That's Umatilla and Morrow County, correct? Yep. And then contributing over 41 million in tax and fee payments. That was in 2021. If you look at the fiscal impact, that's actually updated to 48 million as of 2022. And as well as those large contributions, we're also the largest taxpayer in both Umatilla and Morrow County, and we're proud of that. But as much as these investments are important, it was really as important to us, if not more important, to really look at how did these large investments directly impact individuals living here in Umatilla County? So. So this is Daniela and Mo Fang from our research and analysis team. They might look familiar to you, they were here for a week in December, and I know had a chance to meet with, with a few of y'all, but they are just some of the most talented colleagues, and what they wanted to do was come out and spend an entire week here, again, learning, asking questions, meeting with different community partners. And so from that, they took this information back, and some of the, some of the information I'm going to share today was actually not necessarily planned. It was a couple of data center employees that were giving us a tour. They had not been through a data center, so they were giving us a tour, and from just those conversations, it was just incredible to hear their stories, just, you know, residents, they're actually all from Hermiston, but just hearing about their experience. And so I'll share three quick stories with you, and then just some opportunities to hear a little bit more about career paths. So, next one, go ahead and skip through. So this is Ray's story. So Ray's from Hermiston, he's a Hermiston High School graduate, left the area, actually went to Arizona, and came back. So he was working for a local retail chain and was making $13 an hour after seven years. He joined AWS in 2016, started as a temporary employee making $20 an hour, was asked to participate in a manager training program. He was promoted to manager of data center operations in 2021, and has tripled his income during his time with AWS. And so, in Ray's words, no, that's okay, in Ray's own words, because again, it's more, much more powerful coming from him than me, but Ray shared that there was not a lot of income growth before AWS, but that changed once he started his data center career. "We were able to buy a house last summer and can now afford to pay private therapy for our members of our family who need long-term healthcare support. This job has helped break generational curses for my kids." This is Upa's story. So Upa actually went through that data center technician program that you just heard about in the video. She lives in Hermiston. Prior to AWS, she was raising her two young daughters and worked as a certified nursing assistant. She wanted to try something different. She went through that BMCC program, joined AWS in 2019, and now leads a team mentoring new hires as well, especially women. She worked her way up from data center technician to a data center operations lead, and then in Upa's own words, "I was the only woman in my cohort, and this was a totally different field for me, with no previous background in IT. I thought I was not going to be able to make it. The mentor I was assigned was really patient, and I soon started building both my skills and confidence. The BMCC program taught us the basics about computer servers, security, and networking. I've been expanding that knowledge at work ever since. The field is changing so fast, you're constantly learning new things. It's not like a job where you would do the same tasks every day." And then finally, this is Ben's story. He grew up again in Hermiston, Oregon. He had worked in the construction field, worked as a forklift operator. He got his foot in the door working in a security role that's a, you'll hear that story a number of times, people who will start off working for a security contractor get more information, and then will end up working for AWS. He actually went through a program, I'll talk a little bit more in a second, called Grow Our Own Talent Program. So he joined AWS officially in 2019, began as a data center technician in an entry-level role, and now he's a data center operations lead, and he actually helps operate and maintain specialized equipment in the data centers. And then in Ben's own words, "When I started working as a data center employee, I found myself more and more able to significantly contribute to my family. I can pay for entire family trips and help support my kids and ex-wife more than I ever could before. My son and youngest daughter are now able to concentrate on school instead of having to get a job to pay for their extracurricular activities. Working for AWS has been the single best thing in our lives, both monetarily and otherwise." And so it was so powerful, again, to be able to hear those stories, but just as important for me as hearing these, these stories from people that are living and working here is making sure people know about the opportunities and how to pursue careers that are available locally. So, next slide. Most people are familiar with cloud computing, but just wanted to really quick talk about the difference between cloud computing and cloud infrastructure roles. Cloud computing is really more focused on those remote positions, so software developer, anything that you can do from a computer at an off-site location. The roles that we have here in the region are really cloud infrastructure-focused roles, so that's helping to build the data centers, operating the data centers, connecting them with fiber obviously is really important, so as you're trying to pull something up on your phone, you're not frustrated because it's taking forever. And then, of course, making sure that those data centers are powered as well. So those roles here locally, we've got different pathways to employment. We highlighted the Blue Mountain Community College program, the data center technician program. There's also the Industrial Systems Technology Program that's more focused on the facilities maintenance. We also have our Grow Our Own program that's really set up more like an apprenticeship program, 12 weeks on-the-job training, but if you successfully complete that program, then you're offered a full-time position after. We know not everybody can go back to school full-time, and so this is a great opportunity to transition and still bring in income. And then also AWS internships, our ad partners in the region have been doing internships successfully for years where they bring in people, try them out, and if they're a good worker, they offer them a full-time job, and that's been working very, very well. And so this, this model's set up the same way, where anybody that's graduating, continuing their education, has opportunities to come back, work in the summer, and then if they successfully complete that internship, once they finish their schooling, they can come back to a full-time job. So with that, happy to answer any questions, but again, just appreciate the opportunity to come back and, and share some outcomes of these projects with you.
Hi, uh, go ahead, can we share ten?
Well, Kaylee already knows this, I think, have all three of us spoke at an AWS event?
Fusion training?
Yeah.
Fusion graduation?
Okay. We've all, we've all been invited to speak at different times at these events.
We worked together, Doug.
And what impressed me the most, and I think, I'm sure I speak for these guys too, is that you had such a wide variety of people, all ages, all backgrounds. Every single person that shook my hand was smiling, they were just thrilled to be there. And then there were job opportunities, I mean, they were waiting right there. And so, plus blending with Blue Mountain Community College was, is just wonderful for our region. So I think it's just a win-win-win for everyone.
No, I appreciate the partnership with BMCC, because as, and it doesn't matter what industry you're talking about, workforce shortage is huge. And so kudos to you and BMCC for, for thinking outside the box, and especially Peter, he did a really fantastic job, and I am fortunate to know him, and he did a great job, and I kudos him.
Thank you, guys. My comments are a little different. The, for everything that you showed today, it really doesn't scratch the surface of the partnership that Umatilla County and AWS has and enjoys. And when I say that, it's from everything from being responsive to calls, you answer my calls at nine o'clock at night or four in the morning, but it's not just you, it's Dave on the operations side during construction. If I get a complaint for dust, I make a call and it, and it actually gets addressed when I call. I can't say that for all industries, but AWS has been extremely responsive. The ability for AWS to recognize some of these different aspects while we have contract discussions, the, really the recognition of how important the public safety is, how the recognition of education. But really, what really just is incredible to me is the recognition of AWS and being part of the community. Again, the first ones were in 2011, you guys were very public about that, it was, was quiet as could be. And it caused, I'm not going to say friction, but it caused a mystery of a new industry that none of us had any idea about. Fast forward 12 years, and you are the community. I mean, you're part of the community every day. You can't go to a chamber meeting, you can't go to a PTA meeting, you can't go to a library reading, you can't go anywhere without AWS being present or their employees. And I think, I think that's huge. And to spend that one more time around is AWS recognizes that we're a county, and has taken advantage of having the opportunities to support other areas in it. I mean, I went to a Melbourne Free Water event, and there was an AWS-supported group there at the same time. So I, I only want to say thank you, and that's, that's at the community level. And then when you go even higher, if I go to Washington, DC, AWS, Shannon and the guys, I mean, they make you feel first-class and very welcome when you get there. Salem, I mean, obviously, we worked very close on several pieces of legislation. I, I just don't think people understand enough. I think it's happening quickly, but I think that if people understood how much AWS is just a part of the community as we are, they just have the ability to dream a little bigger than we can at times financially, but they make sure that our dreams come true too. The walking path, or when that, that press release comes out, I think it's going to be extremely a legacy-type project. It's one that's been in works longer than before, before AWS showed up, and now, now it's come to fruition with a lot of help. So I, I just want to wrap up by saying thank you for the presentation. Two, thank you for the partnership, because I truly consider AWS a partner at all different levels. And just your ability to interact with the communities throughout Umatilla County and Morrow County is just incredible to watch. And so thank you very much for everything that AWS does. Don't tell Shannon that I said that, or anybody else. Thank you very much, Kaylee, and thank you for the friendship and the ability to communicate on all these projects.
Thank you for the partnership, and we're here to listen, that's really what it's about, so.
Thank you, Kaylee.
I would send him to voicemail for him.
Any comments, public comments on this agenda item? All right, moving on, let's go to the public health contract. Oh, water tank system, oh, that's, yeah, it's a different code. Good morning, Mr. Fellows.
So glad to know I'm memorable.
We remember this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fellows, County Public Works Director. I'm happy to see Commissioner Schaefer made it back from Texas without melting away.
It was close.
So what I bring before the board today is we're looking for authorization to purchase a water tank and spray system for two of our trucks. We went out for requests for proposals on these, got three proposals back, one from Klein Products out of Texas, one from Randco out of Kelso, and the third one from Smith Equipment and Welding out of Prineville. Smith Equipment and Welding was the best value for what we were asking for at $80,236. We're actually adding to our fleet with these water trucks. What we've been using in a lot of the areas are just gravity flow systems out of a splash pan, very inefficient use of water, water's becoming much more, we just need to be paying more attention to, to our ability to surgically put water on, on our road surfaces as we're, we're processing and whatnot. This is going to, this is going to be a big boost to our program to add these two tanks and trucks, our systems. So we're requesting approval to purchase this tank and spray system from Smith out of Prineville.
I like the fact that the cheapest one's the closest one to us.
That there is that as well.
It's tragic, a motion that we authorize purchase of water tank systems and installation from Smith Equipment and Welding in amount of $80,236.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, can you second it first?
Nope.
You got seconded first.
My question-
Oh, you got a second and a first, we got a motion on the floor.
Second and?
Thank you.
Okay. But I do have a question. Tom, how come there's a $40,000 difference? Change?
I can't answer that.
Does everything in Smith have what you need?
Yes, yes, we've, and we actually verified that through, through email, because, but there's, there's only, there's $4,000 between Smith and Randco.
Right.
The, the company out of Texas, I, I can't tell you they were given all the same information.
Shipping or something.
No, actually shipping was not included in that $125,000 number. There's, there, and they were, their actual proposal was they were going to fit the trucks somewhere in California. So I, I don't know, I mean, it's, they're an independent company and certainly had every opportunity. They, they did call, asked Brian some questions on that, that's just what they came in at.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that Smith had everything he needed.
Yes, yes, no, they, they do. Smith and Randco both, both had everything that we needed on the truck. That company did as well. I didn't see anything extra that they were offering. It's just, yeah.
Okay.
Just the nature of the beast.
Okay.
Be your second.
Second and a half.
And the only reason I did that is because Don Miller was here, and if I did something wrong parliamentary, he would have called me.
I was going to say, okay, we won't get into that.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Tom. Public health contract.
Good morning, Joe Fumar, Public Health Director for Umatilla County. So this one is to essentially renew for another So this one is to essentially renew for another year a contract for radio and advertisement outreach that we've had for the last couple of years. The company we contract with has technically changed, but we've been given the same rates. They honored our existing contract finishing out this year, and they've given us the same opportunity to contract for another year. We get a, we run 98 ads across two stations that are mostly broadcast in Spanish, covers a broad area, actually goes outside of Yumitila County away, so other folks get to hear us as well. And this also comes with, we do two interviews a month with all interpretation included that they provide when it's someone like me who doesn't speak Spanish who attends those interviews. And they do all the interpretation for our ads and the production of those as well as part of, part of this contract. And so the funding from this all comes from our grant funding from Oregon Health Authority. Most of it I'm pulling from our modernization funding, but not entirely. And the other pieces come from other, other grants that we have from OHA for outreach and education.
Questions?
I move to approve the contract and payment of $90,000 to Alcon Media LLC.
I'll second that, and I appreciate the fact that that's not the general fund dollars.
Understood. Been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, here is a slot out of Public Health.
Yes. So this one is for some purchases for our opioid overdose prevention program. We have, we receive a grant from Oregon Health Authority in partnership with Union County. This was a competitive grant that we were able to acquire a couple of years ago and is continuing, continuing on. We've got some items here for purchase. The med bags are given out to folks as a way to secure prescriptions that they have, you know, legally and legitimately had in order to help keep them out of the kids of, out of the hands of kids, teenagers, you know, other, other folks who might swipe a prescription that is seen lying around type of scenario. We're wanting to purchase some Narcan, which is used to counteract an overdose that is in effect. And then we give this out to agencies and individuals either who, either who are users or who work with users and interact with them as a way to help prevent overdose deaths. And the Rescue Shot cases are kind of a case we package the Narcan in that comes with some gloves, breathing protection in case somebody needed to do CPR, those, those types of items, and we give those out as a kit together. These are three separate purchases because they are three separate vendors where these are coming from, but I bundled them together because they're all coming from the same funding source and they're all working together in the same program. And again, all of these funds are coming from the regional funds we get from OHA specific for our opioid overdose prevention program.
Excellent. Doug, would you, this is one at a time, or?
Yes.
Okay. I do have a question at a meeting yesterday with Adams, City of Adams. They were asking, do they, with, with the East Empire District, would they be the ones that the City of Adams would rely on to have the Narcan?
So as far as Narcan, yeah, when we have it, we give it out to folks like that, right? Like if they reach, you know, we don't always have it, and there are sometimes restrictions on who we can give the Narcan to. In the past, there had been requests from different law enforcement folks who were wanting to have some on hand as they interact with folks.
Have some behind you.
And sometimes our funding tells us specifically that we're not allowed to give it to law enforcement individuals. The official answer I've been told so far on this one is they haven't told us. And our position is anyone who interacts with somebody who, who has a potential for overdose should have access to Narcan in order to counteract that.
Other questions?
I was in a meeting the other day, and it was just, just a citizen and decided that it was important that they have Narcan in their car, just because I don't know whether she ran into a situation where she needed it, or she wasn't medically, or any type of police, you know, just a, just a citizen. We're to that point.
Yeah, so the, the biggest barrier in getting it to everybody is the cost, is it's not a cheap, I think, I think it rounds out, you know, the, the two sets of doses that are, that are provided. I think our cost tends to be around $100, $100 a dose. They, there have been some changes, both federally and state level, where they're trying to make it easier for folks to acquire, but there's still a cost in acquisition. And our restriction tends to come from where our funds come from. Everybody likes to argue that somebody else is going to pay for some, some specific service in peace. So our intention is to give this out to folks as they come up. We tend to focus on organizations, and we, we do that specifically. We try to work with organizations. We offer training for administration and details around that. We like to try to pair giving them Narcon with that. And with that, where, where they then distribute it, they have a bit more freedom because we've given it to them, and then they're able to make determinations as it goes forth. And so I'm not saying we wouldn't give it to a random person who walked in our door, but we do try to focus on organizations to get it spread out and have it kind of filtered out that way.
Entertained a motion for expense of $6,222 for the med bags?
I move.
Move what?
Okay. I move for approval.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next one is I entertain a motion for $23,370 from Emergent.
I move for approval.
Second.
Been a motion and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion for the expense of $6,646.50 from Rescue Shot Case.
Approval?
I'll second, but can I ask what that is?
Yeah, so it's, they look like these little red kits, and they're basically set up with some accessory supplies for administration of Narcan. It might be some, some gloves, some wipes. I think there's usually like a, a breathing barrier in case you're doing CPR on, on somebody. And we actually, we put the, the two, the two administrations of Narcan in these kits, and we give the kit out in its entirety.
So does that go to a specific clientele?
As, as we give it out. So we, we don't give out just the, just the nasal sprays of Narcan. We actually bundle them in these kits, and the kits are what we give out.
Been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the Sheriff's Office Purchase.
Good morning, Commissioners. Paul Wolverton with the Sheriff's Office. What you have before you this morning is a request to purchase new and replacement body armor for our patrol deputies. Body armor, as you know, is a required piece of equipment for police officers, and this particular body armor is consistent with what we've ordered in the past, what is consistent with our current uniforms, with the carriers and the duty equipment that goes with it. We are also looking into a body armor reimbursement program through the federal government that I guess we were a member of several years ago, that we're trying to see if that's an option for us down the road, but, so that might provide some reimbursement on these costs that we're incurring. As you know, this is a recurring cost every year since body armor also has a expiration date, so about every five years, the body armor panels have to be replaced. So with that, I can answer any questions if you have them. We're requesting permission to purchase the body armor listed in the quote I provided for a total of $11,142.
Sheriff, approval?
Second.
My, my only question is this, how, why isn't this bundled with the next, next request? Is it all, all the same purchase, right?
Well, it's, yes or no. It's different divisions, so it's, we're, we're purchasing from the same manufacturer, but this is coming out of the criminal division budget, and the next purchase is coming out of the jail. All right.
Thank you. Been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item?
Thank you.
Well, don't go away, you got one more.
I'm passing that off to.
Morning, Lieutenant Dustin Erickson, Corrections Division, the Sheriff's Office. So just to, I guess I'm piggybacking off of Captain Wolverton. I have the need for the purchase of six bulletproof vests for staff, some of which have went past the five-year expiration date, and a couple of those of, that we need to get to new staff that we've just brought on. Total being $7,722 for the, for the vests for our staff.
Sheriff, move approval?
Second.
I, I know we had a discussion about this during the budget time. Do you guys actually have a spreadsheet and are the vests serialized, either of you guys? I mean, we've had this conversation, is how do, how do you, or do you just look at, at the start of the year and say these are going to expire? Do they all?
So, so the vests themselves actually do have a date of issue, a date that they were manufactured, so then you just go five years from there. We also do, I can't, I can't speak on behalf of Captain Wolverton, but I'm sure that he has a list. We have an equipment list of everything that's checked out, with the list of stuff of when it was, when, when and if it needs to be replaced.
Pretty extensive, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. So.
Situational awareness, he's over there.
I know.
No, he's sneaky, he's sneaky.
Okay, been a motion?
One question.
Oh, oh, that's right.
What makes them expire? I mean, I realize wear and tear. What'd you say?
There's, there's lots, there's lots of different scenarios, which causes the, the Kevlar and the makeup of the, the material that makes it bulletproof to break down over time. That's why they have the, they have the expiration shelf life of five years. At that point, they believe that it's broke down beyond being able to operate. I don't know the word I'm looking for appropriately.
So a lot of times do you have to replace before the five-year period?
Depending. I, I mean, if it's exposed to something that would break down the material sooner than that, or perhaps get some biohazard on it or something like that, that, that's definitely a possibility and has happened before.
Okay.
The ones that just simply need to be replaced because it's hit its five-year mark, sometimes we try and utilize those panels for other purposes. You know, some of our tactical entries and things like that, we use Kevlar panels for, if we break glass to lay over that. You might have seen some of that in some of the active shooter videos and stuff where teams are breaking into schools and laying those panels over the glass so they can get people out and we can get in. We use them for vehicles sometimes to add a movement, more cover if we're anticipating a, a potential shooting incident or something like that. So we try and make use of them outside of simply throwing them out.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Next item is Planning Commission Appointment. Ms. Megan Dockchewski.
Good morning, Commissioners. For record, Megan Dockchewski, Planning Division Manager. We have one vacancy on the Planning Commission, and upon review of an application and interview, we are recommending that Ann Minton of the Hermiston area be appointed to serve on the commission. This candidate, if appointed, would complete the remainder of the term vacated by Jody Hinesley, which expires on December 31st, 2025. And then according to the Planning Commission bylaws, Ms. Minton would also be eligible to serve for two additional full four-year terms.
I'll make the motion for approval.
I will second.
Been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're all full now, right?
Yes.
Perfect. That's always good. Next item is for Community Corrections.
Maggie, Doug?
What's coming before the board is a request to repair one of the vehicles at Community Corrections that has had a series of repairs. Hopefully, this will finally take care of the hours repairs, and the amount is for $7,000 to legacy Dodge Jeep.
Sheriff, move approval?
Second.
Been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda.
This is a payable referred to the board due to dollar amount. This is an annual recurring fun, funding for, and budgeted for the software for the Developmental Disabilities Program. And it will go to Therap for $16,438.95.
That's an annual payment?
That's an annual.
Been a motion?
I move. I am moved to pay Therap $16,438.95.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Morning, Board. Riley Wurtman, IT. We are requesting to purchase multi-factor authentication tokens for all county employees. This is due to, I believe, some new requirements for our insurance, cyber insurance, as well as some requirements for CGIS. And the amount is for $31,545.50. This is higher than we planned because of some CGIS changes, so we need to get the FIPS standard versus the, the non-FIPS regulated tokens. Do you have any questions?
I just want to say that every time you have to do a multi-factor authentication, it is the kids. Everybody moans and complains, right? And so I'm just going to say that because everybody's going to, you're going to hear this group moan when this goes through. I realize that it's important and, and for security reasons, but.
On that, so for, for this, it actually might make life a little easier, so the...
Let's not get too in-depth in details.
So one of the things it does, so you have a password that has to be, you know, 16 characters long, right? So with the token, they're actually just a USB token, and you plug it into your computer. And with the token, there's a pin on this, and that's what'll allow you to log in. So you'll actually be entering less, you'll just have to have your token with you at all times for logging in. Does that make sense? So it might make life easier.
I've been a fan of code since it came out 20 years ago.
It's, it's been actually really handy for me because I go to so many different computers where I need to log in, and so I can just plug my token in, hit my PIN, rather than having to type in my full password. And it, it does make it a little bit quicker. But I, as you said, a lot of, and that's the big part, is more secure. But the, you know, it's one of those things where everywhere is going to it because you can't, you know, it leaves such a big security hole to just use passwords.
If they grow with the multi-factor authentication, wait till they get hacked and you're like, "How do you remember?" Then the moaning's really going to happen.
Yeah, that was, we had a couple of our team go down, I think, as you know, and help out in another county, and that's one of the biggest things they found is this will help prevent some of that. There are ways around it, but this, this increases your security so much that it's one of those we just, we have to have.
So much easier. Entertain a motion?
I move to authorize the purchase of MFA capability for all employees for $31,545.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. Next item is tax foreclosure.
This matters before the board for the annual tax foreclosure process, which will be initiated later this month. As required by the statute, we do have to publish a notice in a local newspaper. As required by the statute, we do have to publish a notice in a local newspaper. And so the request is to adopt the order designating that you started going in to be the newspaper for publication for the tax foreclosure notice.
Mr. Chairman, move adoption of order TX 2023-034.
Second.
Quick question, is there a requirement on how many times has to be published or?
Yes.
I mean, so they have to have like a minimum of two issues to go out each?
I believe this one is only one.
Does it have to be newspaper or can it be another form of media?
At this point, the statute says newspaper.
Been entertained a motion. We do that. Let's hold on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Next item.
This this matter is coming before the board due to policy. It is a request to employ someone in their post-retirement status through the end of next year.
Mr. Chairman, move approval?
Second.
Been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item on the agenda is the Fair Youth Auction, the annual contribution of the county of $25,000. Any questions?
No, I I think this is wonderful, but I I can't think of a better way. I mean, there's lots of ways the county support youth, but I just think this is, it's a great program, it's a great thing for the county to do. So I move to support the youth livestock auction 2023.
I would second that, seeing as how big it's put kids through college.
That's right.
Been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the final item on the agenda today is financial software.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO, Yumitala County. As you're aware, we are converting from our old software to new software and with that conversion, we've had to divide several funds and and renumber all of the funds and so that today we're just asking for authorization to use those new fund numbers. The other ones were pretty much obsolete. Worked in the old system, won't work in the new system. So so we've got a list of them there probably.
Yeah, Lori's real happy with that list.
There was quite a few. Anyway, just asked that you would approve those new fund numbers and.
Mr. Chairman, adoption of order BCC 2023-034.
I can't say enough, but thank you to you and your whole staff for this whole transition. You guys have made it as painless as possible and seamless as possible because I guess in the back of my head, we're going to be, and we're not done, a lot more, but I think you guys have just done an incredible job. So been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
This meeting is officially adjourned.